All right, everybody, let's go ahead and get started.
Are we supposed to turn them on?
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get going. This is our regularly scheduled city council work session for Monday, September 19th. It is 10:00 a.m., and we're gonna start it off with our discussion item. First one is our Housing Needs Assessment Consultant Introduction, and this will be handled by Community Engagement Specialist Ross Valdez.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you to the council for having us today. Back in August of this year, we ended up having an awards point consulting, a professional services agreement to conduct a housing needs assessment. They've kind of hit the ground running. We ended up having a discussion back in August of August 16, and they're currently reviewing documents, collecting data, and conducting market research for this housing needs assessment. Staff is assisting Points Consulting right now by connecting them with key partners, and we wanted city council to meet their, to meet them to kind of enhance this effort. And so I'm gonna actually stop talking and hand the microphone over to Brian and Pedro, who are here from Points Consulting virtually, and they're gonna give you a little bit of an overview of what's going on.
Thank you, Ross. Just making sure everybody's hearing me.
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, good deal. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna PowerPoint and run a cast. Can you just see a cover page or a PowerPoint deck?
Yeah, we can see it online.
Good. Well, thank you, city council members. Thank you, everybody in Montrose for the opportunity to do this important work for you. I'm Brian, I'm the president of Points Consulting. This is Pedro, key economist with our team. He's also the assistant project manager. And we're just gonna give you a few slides on what we're doing and why. Our firm is located in Moscow, Idaho, and that's all of our staff are roughly in this general area, including Pedro, Madeline, and Brett is a subcontractor that specializes in GIS. He lives up in Spokane, Washington. And as you review our team and the type of work that we've done in the past, also just want to point out that we're currently doing housing feasibility and market study related work in Georgia, Florida, obviously Colorado. Those are the only ones that come to mind right now. We just wrapped up a project in Idaho and one in Washington State. So it's very much one of the core services we provide, and I think one of the unique features of our firm is that we work in a lot of different geographic areas rather than saying, you know, we're just Colorado specific. And I think that provides an advantage as we're able to look for best practices across different. And there's certain things that maybe haven't been deployed yet in Colorado. Maybe they have in other places, and we can be aware of those and look into them and their compatibility with your area. And I think one of the things that some of you may have this question, certainly some of the community members will have this question, is what's the point of a housing needs assessment? We know we need houses. We don't need to pay somebody to tell us we need more housing. We need more affordability. And although that's true, that's not really the point of what we're doing. What we find is that there's a lot of areas, context, different confections for the types of housing needs that are required. And that is reflected in a, you know, specific area within the city or community. The size and for different types of households, obviously the cost levels. And then the bigger question, well, what can we do about that? You know, once we have that information. And our philosophy on this type of work is always that we're here to provide value to the organization that hired us, the city of Montrose. So leadership and staff will come away from this knowing, how are your land use policies either think we're inhibiting the types of housing development that you'd like to see? And now what can you do about that? But also, what types of, we try to provide a service that's going to be helpful to the private sector and nonprofits as well. So if you're a nonprofit focused on housing advocacy work, you need material for your grant requests, right? To say, well, we've proven that this need exists, and here's the data to show it. If you're a private sector developer, there is a lot of uncertainty. There's a lot of uncertainty in the market, especially right now. And what we've seen when we do this kind of work elsewhere is that we can often activate that private sector by demonstrating the level of demand and the, again, the kind of complexion of it can cause some people to get into the development business or into the real estate investment business that are kind of sitting on sidelines or kind of hesitant for it. So and I think our philosophy is that it's not just one solution at a point. It's public sector, private sector, nonprofits, all working under the assets of it. So I know those are always questions, so I just wanted to acknowledge those points. And on the next slide here, we have a brief overview of what we're doing for our scope. And, you know, as Ross mentioned, we're kind of in the document ecosystem review at this point, so we're looking at things like zoning code, comp plans, economic plan, chamber of commerce publications, full scale 360 degree view of what's going on in our economy is obviously part of what drives and is the people that are there for their work. We're also in the early stages of data collection and market research, which will include demographics, socioeconomic, housing stock information, GIS information. We've got a long list that we've been working through with Ross and Chase Parkwald that we're working through on that front, some of which is kind of national level. You know, census, fact sources, some of it is localized. We can save data on your tax, tax officer from the city planning department. We outreach this piece of the legal work because you can't really understand the community or market just by looking at spreadsheets. So we will be there, we'll be there to talk to people and see it ourselves. Pedro and I will be there on the 11th and 12th of October. We'll be our first trip, and we'll be coming back again sometime in the near future after that. And then we move to synthesizing information in process five and six, putting together a few recommendations, assessing what are some of the things that are similar and what kind of lessons can we learn or not. And then a key piece of that is also a housing demand forecast through 2040, as well as called for within the RFP. And then we'll have to present to you all when it's all said and done. And here's our project timeline with an outline of the deliverables we're providing. First deliverable was just our project work plan, which we've already provided to Ross. And we have this kind of roughly nine month period, so the deliverables kind of roll out in increments from here until April of next year. As I mentioned, you'll see we'll be in town. Maybe we'll see some of you in October. And we'll also be doing a community survey. It's another form of engagement during that period of time. And there'll be some deliverables coming out in September, March, early March and late March. So that's a really brief overview of what we're doing. And to predict another question that organizations like yours typically have is what can you, assuming that I've shown you that this is important and they want to advocate for it, you know, ask, well, what can we do to do that? And I'd say there's multiple things you can do. First one is just awareness of what we're doing because people will probably be asked as we start to engage with community members. People will say, hey, where do these people find their contract? It's not, I know, and you can get an answer. Pedro is, this week is gonna be working on something called the introductory letter, which is about one page, here's what we're doing with this project. It's on city of Montrose letterhead. It'll be signed by, we haven't figured out yet, maybe Ross or somebody else with the staff. So it's coming from you, but it's kind of giving us permission, you know, entrance into the community to speak to us. Now, it tends to camp out a lot of the questions that you might get, but still, we will get them. So that's one thing. Second thing is helps us to profit is this community survey as it comes out in October through December, I'm afraid. It really helps to get those pushed out through as many meetings as possible. We haven't worked out, we'll be available with Ross, but one option is to actually get some kind of QR code and publication that's going out by the city, you know, electronically or increment. So that's an option that's a lot of, and you know, your doctor, a little network, or the people, that kind of thing. And lastly, if anybody wants to engage with us more deeply, this is kind of 15 minute segment here. They may want to be happy to be, especially if you're somebody who's been involved with housing in some sense, either through community nonprofit services, home assistance, private development, property management. Those are the kind of perspectives, obviously, people will know a lot about your communities. So it'd be great to talk to you if you wish, and just let Ross know, and if ever I can connect with you through that. So I think I've got only 15 points here, and I've done it in nine and a half minutes. Pretty good. So I will give it a pause here and see if anybody else has any questions.
Brian, my concern is the community outreach. How are you proposing to get out there and reach the lower income community that actually have two or three people or a couple of families living in the same units to find out exactly what's needed in the community? Because I know a lot of people that have homes, they're gonna probably say, well, do we really need it? But there are a lot of young people in this community that are living three and four to a two or three bedroom trailer park or apartment if they're allowed to. So how do you plan to address that?
Yeah. What's your name, sir?
Ed Hulaberry.
Okay, thanks. That is a great question. And then, who was I just mentioning? We're looking at people, I have a talk, and so. Zoom screen, shovel your, I mean. Yeah, I'm not going to lie, getting to the lowest income and largest three each population is always one of the worst aspects of everything. So it takes work, it takes some persistence to do it. So one of the things we'll do is through our electronic app, we can actually target the particular interests or, we use Facebook ads, and then they basically allow us to say that it is a given circumstance or immune on a bracket, right? Things like that. So that'll help push out. And, you know, beyond that, if there are people who kind of open doors to the communities that you have, private conversations, that's super helpful. When we're in town this time, or next time around, we're open to be very, whatever kind of creative solutions we can have, including, you know, coffee shop, where everybody will collaborate, I won't take it. Time on data collaborate. Sometimes the feedback isn't formal, you know, I feel about this. This is 15 question survey that's submitted, and it's just, we talk a lot, and it's just what you're asking me. And so tell us where we can go, and then we can work on that.
One more question. Will you make any recommendations on how to, how we might address the not in my neighborhood attitude that is pretty predominant in some communities? It has been in the past here in Montrose.
Yeah, good question again. That is one of the things that makes finding institutions on this front very key. I think it is kind of a, it's something that takes place over time. And I think one of the things you can do is just really provide people with data to show your situation. And when there's one chart, for example, you can show that it will say, well, here's the housing price appreciation, here's the rent cost appreciation, and here's the income appreciation of the past 10 years. Right? People can see the disparity between those, and it's like, wow, okay. Really is hard for people to buy a single tenant home. It's not the same situation that it was 10 years ago, 20 years ago, 50 years ago. So providing data to speak to that situation is really helpful to start. And then the best practices really helps us start. Some things is psychologically where people feel comfortable when you can say, oh, this solution was doing well in X other place, you know, a centennial or whatever. Sometime you can work later with, you did it 10 years ago, and it didn't, you know, result in maybe we're going to put it down or housing crisis deployment. If you can point to places where some of the policy changes would just have been more openness, things that are already permitted within policy about people that have accepted more easily. But it's always a process, and there's an element of education, community education, and it takes time. And I think that, you know, my two greatest lessons from doing this work overall is data to speak, and then pictures to speak. So, you know, get people to see, run the images are actual examples of where certain situations have been. That's easier than that.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome.
Are there any other questions? Well, thank you, Brian. We appreciate you being with us. We appreciate your time, and we look forward to hearing some results from you.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Talk to you again.
All right, moving on to discussion item B, the discussion of graffiti fund monies. And this is Judge Greenacre, Shanie Wittemberg, and City Attorney Ben Morris.
I think this is your item, though.
It's my item. I thought it was your item.
Your name is first.
Okay, my name's first. In your ordinance, on graffiti, you have a provision to create a graffiti fund for the purpose of utilizing funds that are deposited to remove graffiti. It allows for the deposit of money from graffiti cases, and I think Ben and I have agreed that that relates to the fine part of the sentence, and to accept other donations for graffiti. So far as I can tell, no fund has ever been established. We have, Judge Brown established a victim's assistance fund, and in the budget note, which Shanie can tell us more about, there's a reference to a $50 charge for graffiti. So far as I can tell, that's never been collected. And we have since transferred all the funds out of that victim's assistance fund, which, if we recall, was some $25,000 into the general account. During my tenure here, in a year and a half, we've had one graffiti case. They don't seem to come up a lot, and I just, at this point, would not think you're gonna collect very much for such a fund for graffiti, for graffiti removal. I'm also told, you know, lots of things before my time that I'm not an historian about, that there used to be a restitution work crew, and that the restitution work crew would, one of their responsibilities was to remove graffiti. But that's, we no longer have the work crew. We assign all our UPS clients to other nonprofits in the city. So I guess the question is, well, you need to know about it, first of all, but I have to say I don't think it's really workable. And whether or not, and I, by the way, I don't know what's happening out there on the street in terms of graffiti. I don't know what the city's facing in that respect. But I think the question is whether you want to amend your ordinance or change your ordinance accordingly.
Thank you. Any questions for anybody?
It sounds like we do. It sounds like we just need to update the ordinance. We clearly spend money removing graffiti, and it clearly costs more than the $50 we might collect each year. And we do it professionally and not with volunteers. So it sounds like the ordinance just needs to be updated.
Yeah, because it seems to me that, I know we have a, we've put the anti-graffiti backings on a lot of our new projects, but we still have to deal with the graffiti. But if we've only had one case in a year and a half, that $150 donation is not gonna help us out much. Shanie, did you have anything you wanted to add on that?
No, I just wanted to, I did run a report earlier, and from 2017 through now, what we've recorded for graffiti removal that the city has provided is about $50,000. So we're spending a lot of money on graffiti.
And I might say, if somebody comes to court charged with graffiti, and there's a cost of removing it to the city or otherwise, that can be imposed as restitution. So, but that's a specific remedy for a specific case, not a general remedy that would provide funds for general graffiti removal.
So are you gonna be bringing us kind of a revision to that code to make sure we're gonna be current?
We can do that. It's the council's direction, simply to remove the anti-graffiti account provision then? That seems to be the thing that's, the judge is talking about.
That's it, that does seem to be kind of the thrust of this.
That's easy enough. I just want to make sure we're on the same page before I prepare something.
I think that's the right thing to do.
Yeah.
All right.
Any other questions? Awesome. Moving on to the court appointed counsel. And this is Judge Greenacre and City Attorney Ben Morris.
Well, this one is mine, so I will begin. An ordinance I'd like to point out, as background, an ordinance I'd like to point out to use 114-3, and that provides if a person is indigent and not appointed counsel, that they may not be sentenced to a term of imprisonment. So, and this really just mirrors the constitutional requirement that if we're going to put somebody in jail, we have to provide counsel for them if they are indigent. And that's a process we use by, and it has to be a jail sentence. So for example, if somebody comes in with a charge, only has a fine, they're not entitled to court appointed counsel, only if there's a jail sentence. And that, of course, reflects the constitutional requirements in any event. Now, the legislature passed the statute 13-10-114.5 in Colorado revised statutes, and it provides that after January 1 of 2020, each municipality shall provide independent indigent defense counsel through a nonpartisan entity independent of the court to oversee and evaluate attorneys. So as you can see from this, the court is taken out of this process. It has to be somebody independent of the court and not involved with the court. And frankly, if you read this statute further, sometimes it has to be independent of, otherwise of the city. For example, the city attorney can't be involved in the process. So there are about four ways that you could comply with the statute. First of all, you can appoint ADC counsel. Now, let me explain what ADC counsel is. The Office of Alderman Defense Counsel is an organization, a state agency created by the legislature. Their role is to provide attorneys to take cases when the public defender can't take a case. So if the public defender conflicts off the case, then they can, the court can appoint ADC counsel. ADC contracts with their attorneys, and they vet and monitor their attorneys. So they make sure that their attorneys are capable in criminal law, have criminal background and experience. They monitor them, so if there's any complaints, they monitor them. They have a contract, they can terminate the contract. And it's generally their responsibility to make sure that those attorneys are providing the service that they are contracted to provide. So if we contract with Alderman Defense Counsel, that is people that already have a contract with Alderman Defense Counsel, we can comply with the statute. The second way is we can contract with, what I'm gonna call, private attorneys, private defense attorneys. But we have to have them vetted and monitored, and there's about three ways to do that. First of all, and this has to be done through the city administration, not through the court. You can have, hire one, from one to three attorneys to manage this program. They would, I'm assuming they would take applications, they would go over those applications, they would vet the attorneys, and they would manage them and monitor any complaints. You can work through an independent indigent defense counsel, which is something that larger municipalities do, like in the metro Denver area, so they have a committee that oversees this whole process. And the third way is to have the OADC monitor your attorneys. Now, they have what they call a municipal court section, and they're authorized by statute to provide services to municipalities for court appointed counsel. There's a number of ways they do that. They do prepare a list of their own attorneys that will take municipal court cases, and they will monitor attorneys. So if we come up with some counsel attorney that wants to provide services for us, we can refer that person to OADC, and they will do the vetting and let us know that they're okay. And I will point out under the statute, if we find an attorney, we have a year to complete that process. So we don't have to get them approved first. We can start in, get them approved during that one year of timeframe. Now, this is one of the issues with using OADC, and it's a very interesting process. So if you want to apply, you have to do it by September of year, I'll call it year one. They approve you by May of year two, if they have money. If they don't have money, they don't have to approve you. And if they approve you, then you start January 1 of year three. So it's kind of a lengthy, convoluted process. And we have been approved to start January 1 of next year. So we're in the loop, as it were, and we have applied this year for 2024. So we're in that process. Now, and by the way, I think that if things go the way they seem to be going, we may have to contract, which means you'll have to set up somewhere a process of sending out advertisement and so forth, and see if we can solicit private attorneys that want to go through this process. Now, here's what's happened in the past and why I'm coming to you. About a year ago, we had this same issue, and I met, we met with Brett Martin, who's an ADC counsel here, and we contracted, we didn't contract, we made arrangements with three attorneys, Brett and two others, to provide services for us. And that's worked pretty well up until about the last three months. Brett's gone on to Mississippi, and one of the other attorneys has said he doesn't have enough time because he has so many ADC appointments that he can't take on our cases. I've contacted other ADC attorneys in the area, and they tell me the same thing, that they, one of them's work, Kristen Hindman's working in, down on the southwest corner of the state, Cortez, in that area. So she has a lot of cases there, and she was unwilling to take this on. I've talked to some lawyers in Grand Junction, and they say, well, what's your proposal? So that's, I'm down to one, and I'm concerned that the way things have been going that he may opt out, because he's had quite a few cases lately. Now, the proposal that I've made, and I think you've all received the documents, is two pronged. First one's to raise the rate. For some reason, the OADC rate is $80 an hour for misdemeanors and $85 an hour for felonies. And I don't know any attorney that would work for those rates. They just seem far too low, and the Supreme Court, the Chief Justice just upgraded that administrative order, Chief Justice directive, and kept the rate the same. So I don't know why they're not raising the rate. So the, what I'm proposing here is we raise the rate $125 an hour, hopefully, which will hopefully attract attorneys either from private practice or an OADC. And the problem here is that there just are not enough OADC attorneys in this area. The attorneys that are taking these cases are complaining about their workload. They just had one was appointed to replace Judge Morris. I think they have another one on that I'm gonna try to contact, but, and they're just, they're covering, you know, the seven judicial districts is a, is a six county district, so there's a lot of driving involved. So it's just a shortage of attorneys that we can utilize. The other proposal is that we use, if we have to reach outside of OADC counsel, that we use the OADC municipal court program. And Legal and I have been on the, you know, we did a Zoom meeting with those folks, and they're very happy to help, and I think will be very helpful. We've also come up with a contract, which is in the materials I submitted to you, for each attorney. That, and we haven't had it in the past, it might be a good idea. One thing I want to avoid is I, I don't want somebody to come in and say, I'm done with your cases, here they are. And they'll have a backup to a point, because if I, if we don't have that court appointed counsel, we're gonna be in have that court-appointed counsel, we're going to be in a bind in terms of the penalties we may be able to impose. So, that's the situation, and we did, we did an analysis. What I'm finding is that we have peaks and valleys in court appointments. We just had a run of several cases, especially people in jail. So, we've just received, I think, you know, a couple thousand dollars in bills for that. So, it kind of goes up and down, but the analysis we've done shows that going from the $80 an hour figure to $125 an hour is about $2,500 increase in the budget, so it should not be significant. We may have to pay for some travel time, which is billed at a lower rate, especially we have to bring attorneys in from Grand Junction, but we are developing the Zoom, we use WebEx capability, so a lot of that can be done. Our attorney, for example, that we have now is in Grand, in Telluride, so he appears a lot via WebEx. So, that's the situation, I just wanted to run it by you and get your response and see what your thoughts were. There's a, you know, some policy decisions here. One is, do you want to have a jail sentence? Because we can abandon the whole process if you want to have a jail sentence. I don't recommend that, I don't think that's a good idea. Or, secondly, you can go to one of these other ways of vetting the attorneys.
Chuck, if you, if we raise the rate $125 an hour, it sounds like we may still have problems getting someone to-
We may. I reached out to one of my lawyers that I would very much like to have, and he says, "No, I can't do it, $125." So, this is just going to be a work in progress to try to find, find attorneys. And you need to at least have two, because sometimes there's a conflict of interest between co-defendants. And I'd like to, perfectly like to have three and maybe a bench.
What percentage of cases do have a jail sentence as an alternative?
And what kinds of things have a jail sentence?
Well, you're mostly talking about things like shoplifting, those types of property crimes. We, we, I don't see a lot of disorderly conduct and that sort of thing, but it, there might be a jail sentence in those cases. The standard sentencing process for the cases where a jail sentence is possible is the first time is a suspended five-day jail sentence, and then it goes up from there, and you start, start to have jail sentences. Unfortunately, we have some people that, for whom they've had several multiple offenses, and so there's likely going to be a jail sentence in those cases. And that's the ones where we're appointing attorneys on a regular basis.
What, what rate would you think would be better for us in order to be, be able to get people to, to do this?
Well, I think we should start out $125 an hour and see, see where we go.
Is that really going to be enough to attract them?
Well, you know, I, in my times as judge, looked at a lot of attorney fee billings, and if you hire a private attorney now, you're probably looking at $200 or $300 or $400 an hour. But I, I say we start there and, and see where we go.
It almost sounds like the problem isn't so much just the rate of pay as it is just time and availability.
Yes, and I will tell you, I point, I reached out to a private attorney in Delta that I thought would be receptive, and they talked it over, and they said, "No, they just, you know, they have other things on their agenda, and they wouldn't be willing to make that commitment." But there might be a young, what's happening a lot in the public defender's office is that the, the public defender won't hire people in the metro area, because everybody wants to go there. So, they're hiring people out in our area. And then these folks are transferring to fill, you know, they, they vet them, they train them, they determine their capabilities, and then they'll move them on to the metro area if a position opens up. But a lot of those, some of those attorneys will stay here in this area, and it might be that there's a young attorney starting out here that would be willing to take this on. And there are other attorneys, I, I think we have an attorney in Crested Butte that might be willing to take it on if he can get through the Blue River Canyon.
Any other questions for Judge Greenacre? Thank you, sir.
Is that, now, may I proceed? I don't need a formal motion, I don't think, but any, any concerns about?
I think you're getting the general nod.
All right, very good. Thank you.
All right, very good. Moving on to item D, the Hilltop North Addition Annexation, Planer Two, William Reese.
Good morning, City Council. Do you have a brief presentation to share? I understand I'm a candidate for a new system here, so I appreciate your patience. All right. Apologies for that, thank you for your patience. As stated, this is a annexation application for the Hilltop North Addition. This work session overview will serve as an informational session before court hearings. This is the draft schedule for this brief, for this application. We do intend to schedule the council resolution to set hearing date on October 4th, followed by the planning commission hearing to make a recommendation of zoning on October 12th. And then we plan on bringing the ordinances for the annexation and zoning to two readings on October 15th and December 6th. To orient you, here is a general vicinity map of the proposed annexation. Now, this is in the northeastern area of Montrose, along 6600 Road, just north of this intersection with Locust Road. For those of you who might remember, this is also just the North Hilltop Addition that was annexed in 2020. The site is 10.01 acres in size. Annexations larger than 10 acres require an annexation impact report, so we just barely get that here. This property is within the city's urban road boundary and sewer service area, and it's within the tri-county water service area. The area is urbanizing, and more than one-sixth of the perimeter is contiguous to existing city limits as required by the state. As far as neighboring properties, it is adjacent to R4 high-density district zoning as well as land outside of the city. The application is requesting R4, R4 zoning for this property as well, which is intended to provide for high-density multifamily residences and allow variable densities and types of residences. So, here is the annexation flat itself. The shaded area is the existing city limits. About 40% of the perimeter of the proposed annexation borders existing city limits. According to the land use chapter of the comprehensive plan, this area is listed as residential, extensive medium. This provides for a variety of residential types mixed within the neighborhood, including single-family homes, townhomes, duplexes, and triplexes. Most of this designation is in areas that are not yet developed. The property is within Road Area 2, which represents areas that have some level of more moderate proximity to existing infrastructure. And so, in conclusion, staff, I suspect the application meets both the local and state requirements for annexation. The proposal is consistent with public health, safety, welfare, and alignment with the comprehensive plan. And I'm happy to answer any questions here by that.
On this, the, we require the county IGA, and I'm assuming that they're receptive to this and supportive of it.
Yes, I see that. We've been in consultation with the county.
The last time we did this, didn't we also have to go back then and annex the road? Will we, we include that in it this time total?
Yes, the, the, this annexation flat does include half of the perimeter.
Are there, any other questions for William? Thank you, appreciate that, we'll look forward to seeing this at a council meeting. Item E, intergovernmental agreement with Montrose County for liquor licensing shared services, and this is City Clerk Lisa Del Piccolo.
Thank you, Mayor Frank. Exactly a year ago, we entered into an, an agreement with Montrose County where the city clerk's office-
Could you hold that up for them?
Where the city clerk's office processes their applications for liquor licenses and permits, and in exchange, we keep the application fees. We've had a, a good year, we've had a few bumps in the road, but we've navigated them, and we think we've gotten to a good point, made some efficiencies, and so I think both parties are recommending renewal of this agreement. Over the past year, I have processed applications for five renewals, five special events permits, one new liquor license application, and one festival permit application. So, the, the workload isn't huge, and so it's manageable. The change to the agreement would be that we're recommending just an ongoing agreement, either party can terminate within 60 days, with 60 days' advance notice, but it would automatically renew, we wouldn't bring it back again next year. I'm happy to answer any questions. I should point out also that this is for unincorporated Montrose County only, so the number of licenses is pretty minimal.
In the event that the license is denied, kind of like on the open, who do they, will, would they appeal it to the city, or would they appeal it to the county?
So, the county is still the liquor licensing authority, so it would be appealed through their processes and not ours. They're basically just accepting the applications and processing the paperwork. They still sign the licenses and permits, and they decide on all of them.
Okay.
Any other questions for Lisa?
Can you remind me, is the county paying us a fee to do this service for them, or, I'm sure it's in here, will you just remind me what the deal is?
So, we are keeping all of the fees, which probably cover our costs.
Okay.
Yes. The, the workload isn't huge, to, to get an application ready for them to review, except for a new license, which would get a greater fee. So, I think it's, I think it's fair to proceed this way again.
Okay, so as, as, if there are more, then we collect more fees, and if there are fewer, we collect less fees, so.
Exactly, and the fees are set in statute.
Okay, thanks.
Very good. Moving on, general city council discussion.
I don't have anything.
Yep.
Would it be possible to have a brief discussion about the model traffic code?
I don't see any objection, we'll move on to staff comments and-
Oh, okay.
We'll, let you go, go ahead.
Your staff, right? I, I think so, they, I got a name match.
You actually, you have the shirt, I know you work here, so.
Yeah, I know.
All right, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, we are, we are working on consideration of adopting the model, or the 2020 model traffic code, our current traffic, model traffic code's 2003. And in the current version, there is a listing of penalties for the traffic offenses. They are modeled after the state statute. And now, this, this is 2020 model traffic code, and 2021 legislature changed them, and I don't know where we are in that respect. But the question we have for counsel is, do you want to keep the penalties in the model traffic code? Which would mean they would be set by ordinance, and if you wanted to change them, you would have to change the ordinance. Or you could make a reference to the state law and say as amended, and then they would change as the state law changed. The third option is not to mention them, and then the court could do that in a administrative order. Now, I don't really care how it's done, but I, under Rule 211, if we're going to have the penalty assessment process, which I, I believe we need, because cases get resolved quickly that way, I have to have an administrative order with those fines in them. And I can just copy what's in the ordinance or copy what's in the statute, but we just want some direction from counsel, because we're working very hard to get this finalized.
Wouldn't it be simpler just to have an administrative order?
Well, I, you know, I, I'm happy, it, it is just as easy for me to have them set out somewhere. And if I were doing it, I would adopt what the state has, maybe with some minor modifications, but generally, they look appropriate to me. So, it's really up to the council as to how you want to proceed, because then you have the authority to adopt those fines.
Some of our other code revisions, we've been shifting to that referencing the state's statute rather than delineating that, because that way we have state statute changes. We're actually able to comply without having to constantly redo that. Ben, what's your thought on that?
Well, we'd be talking about referencing, what would this be, 4241701, the fee schedule, penalty schedule. I suppose you could do that. The state has a much more complicated structure for fees, and that's also part of that schedule. So, what we'd be doing here is referencing some of it and not other parts. That could be a little tricky, but I don't think it's impossible. I'm just, it's, it's, it's a grid, as I remember it.
Right.
And so, one column in your grid is your fines, and then you've got another column for the, I think it's the vast.
Vicim's comp and vast.
Exactly. So, we'd have to just reference a certain column in that spreadsheet in order to do what you're proposing.
I think we should have them, and I think you guys ought to decide what is the most efficient way to adopt them and go with that.
Yeah, I would agree. I, I think what we're trying to do is make, make the job as simple and easy for you guys. I mean, it doesn't really affect us in that respect, but it does-
Well, it will when you stop.
We've seen the drive, Doc.
And to that, and to that thing, it's, we want to make it simple and easy, not only for staff, but also for our, our citizens, that they clearly understand where that fee came from, who said it, what it is, why it's that. I mean, so, I think there's both sides of it. I, I think I'd be willing to go along with whatever a staff recommendation is, if the two of you get together and talk about pros and cons.
I would agree with that, I think that's a good, good direction.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Any other staff comments from, before Shaney dives in? Okay.
I just want to clarify that our meeting on Wednesday will start at 8 o'clock? Does that work for all of you? Okay. 8 o'clock.
Because of you.
There'll be coffee, right?
Yes, there'll be coffee, it's at the pavilion, so we'll be treated very well. Coffee, tea, water, drinks, I mean, soft drinks.
Yeah, we just, we just lost Barbara.
And it's at the pavilion.
Correct.
And we're starting right at 8:00, I just want to make sure, like, not like mingle at 8:00, start, starting at 8:00.
Starting at 8:00, you can get there as early as 7:30.
Okay. Doors open for good seats.
And recommended to get there as early as-
And it will be 61 degrees in there?
Gosh, I hope not.
You might need your parka.
I probably shouldn't hire somebody to sit in for me then.
No, stunt doubles, no stunt doubles. All right, any other staff comments?
I had a real quick one. Um, so, last work session. We talked about West Main and the open houses. I have a flyer, if you don't mind taking one and passing along. You should have gotten invites, I think it's on the council calendar, um, for the dates that we'll be holding those. The webpage is up and running, so if you want to stay around and mingle, there's actually a really big six-foot-long drawing over there to take a look at of kind of the initial conceptual layout of what it'll look like. But we are doing two open houses, and then a third in Spanish at Mata. And so, I just want to make you aware of the dates and that the information's out there, and if you have any questions, let us know.
Looks great.
It's a great flyer.
And we did get the revised invitation.
Okay.
So, I, I got the revised invitation, so, I'm assuming others did as well.
Mayor Frank, I have a quick go-back.
No problem.
The budget open house for the public, we were proposing to have that on October 18th, which is right before a council meeting. We started that a few years ago, is that still sound like a good idea?
Works for me.
Okay, okay, we'll proceed that way then.
5:00, 4:00, what time are you thinking?
Uh, let's go with 4:30, so we don't hit up against the 6:00, just in case.
Just in case, last time we didn't have a lot of public engagement, so we didn't have a-
Right.
Real conflict, but you never know. Chief Paul.
Uh, just one quick reminder, so this will be the last time we meet before our grand opening on September 27th. The grand opening starts at noon, and Mayor Frank, I believe that you will have the honor of introducing the governor.
That is my understanding.
So, I think we're pretty much where we need to be as far as planning, and so we'll start with bagels with Bill that morning at 9:00, I was thinking 9:30. but nine AM in the, the multi-purpose room in the P D. And then we'll move on to the grand opening at noon. So I think we're ready to go.
Excellent. If you have an agenda and if you could like, share that with us real quick, that would be helpful.
You bet. So the agenda essentially is show up at noon and we'll make a go-up.
Oh, we can, we can do better.
Yeah, no, we, so on that day, we'll start with probably our city manager just making some introductions. And then we'll go right into you speaking. You will introduce the governor probably around twelve fifteen, I think that's when he wants to speak. And then I'll go ahead and close the ceremony. So we're looking probably thirty minutes or so for our opening speeches. We'll have our two A committee and also our public safety committee seated right there in the front with special seating on the street. Council members and electeds and some state officials will have seating underneath our M P D branded tent up on the first level of the new P D entrance. And then we'll have our podium right there. When the speeches conclude, probably around twelve thirty, we'll opening, open the building up for open house tours. We have P D staff that's already scheduled to be seasoned throughout the entire building to help citizens kind of guide through the building. We also have quite a lot of signage in the building to describe the spaces, along with easels in the lobby thanking all of our partners. And then the signage throughout the building is both in English and Spanish. So throughout that week, we have several tours slotted, starting with that Wednesday morning. The forum will come to the police department and we'll hold forum in the community room and that will start at eight AM. And we'll also be open for community tours and we'll close that at eleven o'clock, or eleven AM. And then that night, both Tuesday and Wednesday, or excuse me, Wednesday and Thursday evening, we will have evening tours scheduled from five to seven PM. We do have, with Ross's help, one Latino tour scheduled and that was Thursday evening. Yeah, and so we'll start that at six forty-five PM in the community room and that'll, that'll be about an hour and a half or so. And then we'll close out the tours with Saturday and that's Farmer's Market and we'll be open from nine to one. So...
Very good.
Lots of stuff. It's going to be exciting.
Can I add a detail or two?
Absolutely, please do.
So for council, there will be reserved parking behind the new police building and the new police lot, so you can park there and go through the building. And the national anthem is going to start right at twelve, so you'll want to make sure you've taken your seat before twelve. It'll be awkward if you're late.
Yeah, and we'll have staff that will be greeters that will guide not just council, but all of our electeds and our state officials. We'll have reserved parking in the back of the building so that they can arrive, get their seat, and they're not having to try to find parking throughout the, throughout the city and get their... It's, no, it's just for the day.
Nice try, nice try. Good effort, good effort.
The street, the street will remain closed through, through Saturday's Farmer's Market and, and then probably open up on Monday?
Probably closed throughout that next week while it can be easier.
Okay, so the street's still going to be closed for a while, even while P D moves into that building?
Close to the tenth of October.
Our goal is to be moved into the new police department. Primarily, the, the, the main thing we need to plan is just our, our front-facing customer service operations and making sure that they're in and ready to receive customers before we open up the doors.
You had customers this morning trying to go in?
I'm sure we did.
So I'll get that sign finished for you so you can put it out ASAP.
Thank you, thank you.
Now, will that street be one way during a strike? Yep. A lot of the striping and signage was installed this weekend, so you might see it already starting to look like it's going to. So a lot of arrows painted, a lot of peanut inner signs.
One question I have concerning, there's two parking spaces right at the end of the Centennial Parking Lot that are right where you have to curve to go into that. Are we going to eliminate those parking spots or will they continue to be there?
They will continue to be there. I think that becomes a lot more comfortable once the fence comes down, you'll have more room to get around there. So they, because the road is obviously full width there and so it's actually more room than it was before to be able to get into that parking lot. I think once the fence and barricades come down, that becomes a lot more comfortable.
Are the parking spaces over by Chow Down, are they going to be put back into a slightly diagonal position that you can leave straight on?
They're going to be left straight on, ninety-degree parking on that side of the road, but on the north side of the road by Chow Down and along the parking lot there, those will be diagonal parking. Some of them are now, but those who aren't will be put back to diagonal parking on that side.
Very good. Any other staff comments?
I'll just note that because we know so many people will be joining you at the Farmer's Market on Saturday, the first, our utilities team and our finance team are working together to have a table where people can learn about Aqua Hawk, the new water monitoring software where you can log in and check your water bill so you're not surprised at the end of the month. So that while people are, after they look at the amazing new police department, we can help them log into that system if they want to. So we think it's going to be a great opportunity to interact with our community. We're really looking forward to it.
That, that's just for people on the city water?
Correct, just people on city water. So there'll be more information there about it and also assistance so that people can learn how to log in.
Are all of the water meters going to be able to be logged in through that Aqua Hawk system?
Yes.
Very good. Anything else? All right, then we are adjourned. We do have a executive session that will start as soon as we get everybody ready. We're not in a big hurry with that one.